Okay, it's nine o'clock. I just started this, so you're being recorded from here on out.
Sure. Whose question is Larry?
Larry said, "I don't know what to do."
So, you got it?
Yeah.
What are you doing Wednesday?
I'm busy Wednesday.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I need you Wednesday night.
How can you do that?
Down to... Down to Atlantic Hill.
Oh.
My son made the All-Star District Six. So he's playing six games this week in seven days, so he's got a game every night.
Is that it?
Uh... No, just E9, E9-11.
It's nope.
Very good. You nailed it. Excellent. Appreciate it. It was all good.
That's fun stuff.
What?
Going to those games.
Yeah, well...
And E9-11 is fun too.
They, uh... They won the first game last night. They were up 5-1 and they had one bad ending and that's all. Sure. So if they lose tonight, I mean even though they've got three more games left, they're probably down. Because if you lose more, two games in districts, you probably not gonna play against them.
Who's your favorite partner?
Uh, one inside American League.
Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
What's up? Imagine we'll be allowed media here today.
What?
Imagine we'll be allowed media here today.
What time did you get?
Last night for Reserve Program.
Oh.
All right, overloaded. A lot of jumping.
Landville apparently is going well. The Landville?
Yeah. Well, uh, should wait until the, uh... Do some test holes for Landville. But I think that's pretty much... I think they pretty much got it resolved now. Landville. I think it's pretty much resolved. We just have to... We gotta have our meeting there once along.
I just have open lines yesterday.
If Steve King would call them lines, they're out of act.
You mean you wouldn't give him a glowing...
He wouldn't.
Compliment like our sheriff does, like how wonderful he is?
What do you think, like, do you want to...
No, you did.
I feel very injured.
Would anybody want the honest opinion about Harrod Rock or not?
What? Yeah. Oh, is that what you say?
Never say.
Really?
Really. Uh, we are all too old to be into Harrod Rock.
Well, Dan, you can speak for yourself because I spent a week out there and we had a great time.
I don't think they see anybody as my age there.
You have your kids with you.
Yep. I guess the service was pretty good.
Just okay?
Yeah. I heard it'd be on the strip.
Yeah, that's kind of right there, being on the strip. Did you get one of the... We got a, uh... We're after, we got one of those four hundred square foot suites. That was very nice.
We got the two-bedroom pleasure. And it was clear at the end of the hallway. I think there was two doors from the end. And it's like, that's a long hallway. Long hallway. I mean, because from the elevator, it was, you know, a hobble of buildings, no, this way and this way. They didn't even have a balcony either. It was... I wasn't impressed. Didn't think we were supposed to be kind of catering a little bit to us. The lady that we were supposed to get a hold of never picked up, never returned her phone calls.
What was her name?
I don't remember.
Julie?
Could be. But we got this message that if you wanted this or this, well, I just wanted to call on her. But that's okay. Enjoyed the couch with her that night.
Who what?
Brendan Marlin. Bob Marlin's kid.
Oh.
Where they had a reggae pool.
That'd be fun.
But it was so hot. The weather out there was a hundred thirteen, hundred twelve, hundred fourteen, hundred fifteen.
Well, it is the desert and it is summer.
This was the hottest... This was the hottest it's been in seventy-five years.
But you know what's hot even though it's a hundred and five out there?
I could live with a hundred and five.
Really?
It just seemed like, oh yeah, you just come out and it's just like, can't stand it.
I thought it was that way, a hundred and five. I was there once in June and it hurt my skin.
Because one day we were cool, so I prepared for this and we sat out there all night and nobody got hurt.
Was the pool cool?
It was comfortable.
Were they cool, the pool?
I don't know, but it was comfortable. But we were there for five or six hours because we chose to do one day of just being cool. And it, it was nice. It was bad. Where's your all done?
Oh, good.
George, this is my responsibility.
Uh, just for your information, we are online.
Okay.
Starting at nine o'clock every day.
Why the change after thirty years of whatever it was of the other?
No, it started when George said that all the meetings should be recorded. And then...
So it's George's fault?
Well, then George. I'm going to fight with the sheriff, but the two-two-and-one meetings is that if anybody complains about what was going on between nine and ten and I wasn't here, I would move on.
Of course, for me.
Because I'm supposed to record and proceed to... And that's what the county attorney has advised me. That's why I never said it, because nobody wanted me. So is there two different Highway Twenty associations or is there two different meetings that are going to take place? One is ruled, they have a case for.
Okay.
What is the one that...
Uh, Highway Twenty Court Order, which is meeting at the Suits City Library at ten o'clock.
Yeah, I saw that. And there's another one.
It seems that we get the most kind of tourists around here today too. I don't know if they have something in there.
So did you want to be a reserve officer?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I don't have time.
But apparently some of them do.
Yeah. So I'm waiting to hear all the information so that I can finally be fully informed of what's going down. I've been getting emails from the union president because I told him, whatever you said, like I seen yours, that you were shipping in the meeting too and then you got back here. It's like, come on people. So that's my concern is that to make sure everybody's well informed and we do this the right way. If we could come to a happy meeting, I think everybody would be happy with the program.
Dave had never been involved with the board of directors so poor youth candidate and so want to be controlled.
You heard my opinion. I'm very happy to meet him.
And I just don't understand the meaning for all behind the scenes. It seems the big issue is with the labor, Department of Labor saying that they, uh... Basically, the correctional officers are a lot of course not people. The sheriff's argument is that, you know, it's a civilian division. Folks are very civilian. So that's one I don't have any control over. Had pretty lonely in there. Had my fortieth class reunion.
You did? Was it fun?
It was a good one.
Good. Frozen out.
Hit the Marine Am Friday night and then the snow Saturday.
What'd you get in town?
There were sixty people.
Sixty? That's pretty good.
Yeah, out of two hundred and eighty.
I said, "Say that's very good."
Fifteen of, or I think sixty of them missed, sixteen of them are deceased.
Yeah, we have quite a few deceased too.
So now we have the party code.
Oh, they did on Saturday at the park. They had a good stadium. It's kind of a, it was scheduled late, so it's different from national. Ever done it? For the last seven years, who knows what they... They set up a march in Miller's Bay. And he played his band plays off this march.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, it's crazy. I mean, there's probably eight hundred folks there.
Really?
It was nuts. People swimming and, I mean, it was just, I didn't quite understand the purpose of it. They had a crane. And these guys, you know, young guys, I said I'm just three years old. They would like, oh, give him this crane, this basket, and then they would bring him up and they like hoop and holler and then they'd bring him down and the next group would get on. I guess it's like a carnival, right? Whatever. The music was good and...
They weren't jumping out of that thing?
No, they weren't jumping out of it. I think that would have been dangerous. But it was pretty crazy. But then I realized the last ten years I worked every weekend, so of course I wouldn't even know that was ever going on.
I'm helping my brother build a house in North Sioux, so I'm there almost all the time. I haven't even got the chance to write my book yet.
Well, Grand Prix next week, are you going?
Two weeks, yeah.
Oh, it's two weeks? That's two weeks.
Yeah, starts on the twenty, less than two weeks. Want to say that?
I said I got to figure out my date of this. Today's the eighth, so it would be two weeks longer.
Let's see, uh...
Yeah.
Always last four, last four week of July.
Right.
Did you lose any trees?
Um, no. My dad did, of course. But I did spend an hour cleaning up twigs and sticks out in the yard, but nothing did.
So he was out fishing again just recently?
Didn't he do?
Hmm. Wonder why that is?
I see Bill Kendrick's head is...
The what?
Oh, yes. I told Jean, I said, "What do God's angel got to do? He punished everything to them, but what they have left to risk."
Jean kind of agrees too. I said, "I gotta go back for these people." Can I see you a minute?
Can I see you a minute? How many people hanging out in here?
PJ, in here earning my money.
What's that?
In here earning my money, doing my duty.
He's got to do.
So, with that, you have a year? So on with this, you have a year?
Oh, absolutely. And our little years ago.
It's not gonna change much for you.
Pardon?
It's not gonna change much for you.
No. They'll get those, they'll be back. They'll get those, they'll get that.
Never been here anymore.
Have a good fourth?
Yeah, I studied in Chicago.
Really?
Yep, took a vacation. Missed my third meeting here, I think.
They pay you enough to take a vacation?
No, my wife probably doesn't have time.
What, uh, what'd you do in Chicago?
Well, it's our fourth time being there, well, it's mine, so we just played two of us this time, so. Went to the aquarium, little girl loved that. Well, went to the science museum, went shopping one day, went up to the suburbs, down the forest, to avoid the million people downtown. And swam in the pool all day, so tried their limits.
Maybe the aquarium's pretty neat.
It is.
And the science, that's nasty.
Oh, yeah, I think it's huge. But yeah, there's a lot of cool things in there too, so.
Yeah.
Is that different than the field museum?
Yeah, the field museum is more natural history, where the science has different sections, like, um, a weather section, where we've got giant tornadoes, electricity and lightning, and all kinds of stuff to play with. They also had actually, um, the art of the bicycle, where they had two hundred, or like, they had about twenty different bikes, most of them were from the 2013. Saw a defense grade carbon made bicycle that weighed a pound and a half.
Whoa.
Yeah, and then they had like the cardboard bicycle, if you heard about that, they had that, that details are twenty dollars, and they had some older ones, but all kinds of different stuff there, um. They had a thing on genetics, where they were cloning mice and baby chicks and stuff like that, and a little one like that, um. Yeah, they, oh, I got to see the U-boat that they gathered in World War II. And did the coal mine, uh, exhibit that they have there, where they have simulated coal mine, and go through that, so.
I went through that U-boat in nineteen seventy-one.
Oh, really?
I wouldn't let none of those.
Oh, fifty-three people in that little thing?
Yeah, can you imagine?
Wow. Yeah, that's pretty neat to see that.
My uncle had, had to sleep.
Yeah.
For space.
Yep.
Yeah, hot monkey.
So how does that's pretty neat, so?
Which means you didn't go to the race for it.
I have a friend who works in the field museum, so I've been there a couple times. Biggest part of the, highlight of the tour, he likes to take me down to where they're bringing these specimens in in order to clean, like, skeleton for different specimens. And put them in these boxes with these beetles. Beetles couldn't have.
Easily.
And it, um, just stench is unbelievable, you know, that's, that's what they do, that's how they clean those skeletons.
The Field Museum, I went there once, like, ten years ago, but I mean, the dinosaurs are very neat, but
Right.
the stuffed animals, I mean, I can go see that almost anywhere. I mean, you go to Sioux Falls Zoo, you're gonna go through a huge exhibit of that.
And it's the research that they do, and that's what they, they're a huge international company, I just read an article.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Same case, that's just fun.
So we had a good time.
Chicago's always fun.
Yeah, we have a, a relative that lives in Greenville, so.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, so we got a pretty big area to hang out, stuff like that. It's amazing how many dogs are there in that part of town. I mean, everybody owns a dog. You go into the bank there, they have a dog, well, the dog treats and monitor for your dog.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, just. Yeah, I like them all. All kinds of stuff like that, most of those businesses through the, that area, through the Lake Forest or South Florida area and stuff like that, so.
When you talk about Colorado?
Uh, Chicago.
Colorado's pretty dog friendly too.
Yeah.
My daughter used to work in a place that was a drop dog friendly work environment, she took her dog to work, but they all dead.
That gave you the kids. That gave you your kids?
Yeah, it's crazy.
That's what we're talking about, Matt, a bunch of them.
Okay.
I gave you one, didn't I?
Yeah, you had it. I'm gonna do all the resolutions, do something different.
No, listen, what are you having, it's just the format.
Oh.
Basically, it's just spreading out the wages and need two cars.
What was that one way, what area or department is spreading the wages?
Oh, that's, okay. Guessing we never did, we knew some contract, so we're gonna have like, away from that and all that.
Okay. That wasn't so clear on what, that was, right, just all the wages.
Nate Gilead is going to the city to work in the United Development.
Interesting.
She said she worked there before as a secretary.
Yeah, then had to move to where?
Yeah. So she's actually gotta be doing stuff, tech note about.
Okay, this is paid out for your age.
Okay.
My daughter's a little guy, that's a couple of years old now.
Wow.
Like, and he's so gifted already, it's just amazing. Rolling over, talking.
Put a football in my hand, basketball.
So he is trying to swoop to the side, so.
Oh, it's Kendry, I don't think it. Talking to this. Skeleton, head, so long, be this long.
Is that like your documentation?
Apparently.
How many grand children do you have?
Well, didn't eat, now it's about five, but that's my first one.
Okay.
So Pat, did you have any girls that had too much work done for the last forty years, show up at your, your?
There was only one that I was told about, I didn't know it was, geez, such a thanksful soul.
Well, that doesn't mean that she can't have a little work done. Two aren't necessarily related.
No, but she would've been the last one, I would think.
Yeah.
But her husband paid for it, insisted, usually I respect.
I think it would've been already now.
That's, but that's the way, that's the way she does it.
Please her man, no?
And there's a group of, uh, these girls go to the Holly Park every year, it's a week down. That's where she informed about it, she had a mother. But Bart's, they don't ask you, they don't ask you. It was interesting, it was about half the little stuff passed away. I suspect it'd be during that period of time, maybe it's.
Wow.
That was really, when you look back now, in perspective, that was really something, it was a hundred and fifty.
Interesting.
And two of them were pre-priest.
Should've just considered a different line of work, they should've just been priests, wouldn't have to end it all.
Yeah.
Hmm, that's too bad. Is something out of that kind of under control? You're a lot of people, especially during time of aids, if you want to.
No.
I think you still get it, but it seems to be managed with medication or something.
One guy came back, I didn't see him, he was, he was my first husband at the grade school.
Over line?
Yeah, and, uh, his senior year, he, his parents kicked him out because he wrecked the van.
Cause he what?
Cause he wrecked the van.
Mars?
Three or forty people.
Morning.
Good night, dear, already.
Good, how are you?
We didn't get to the basement very quickly. It's cooled out now.
Where's Willie?
He's on the air, we're going on this week's, or this, today, yesterday and today, so.
And are they doing the third hour of June now?
Yeah. Till we figure out what's gonna happen next. Well, I hope it's not what you were doing. Only said, you know, you've done this so many times before, maybe you'd like to, and I said, no opinion.
How can you start in the morning like you're doing, three in the morning?
Well, you know, when Brent Shaw was there, when he was ill, Steve and I did it. That means we went on at six and we're on code, ten.
That's why they are.
That's a long time.
That's right, just sitting here collecting. Doing my duty.
I got a good one for you.
Oh.
Why's that?
Uh, he's gonna get down to us, uh,
See the whole writing, you put something in the writing, down the pin, on who controls the, whether we're used to, what we do, that's our decision, I'm pretty sure. Or stop scheduling. Cause every week there's something new that happens, or that else is still not figured out. We just heard our website's gonna be out and running every.
What, you know, we only honor here, is there something going on that you don't know about, or? Probably not. It's the usual, oh my god, somebody's gone, what are we gonna do now?
Woody's probably just recovering from the reunion.
That's sustainability, but, you know, this is forty of them.
Right. Almost get true. Awesome, only you. I am one. How are we honored with your presence tonight? I'm sure. Oh, yeah, jeez. That's really good. That's fun, Jeff out there.
Scary business.
I don't. There you go. Good morning. There you go. There it is. Jewish razor Michael.
Huh?
Jewish razor. Sixty-three years I've decided to do that. And I don't care who it is, whoever asks to ask me. Oh, thank you. I, I know that's the quickest ever asked to say no. But you might want to invest in a model, Frishy Gray or something. Oh, no, white, white isn't the color. Look, look at Beck though. White isn't the color, look at Beck.
He just grew that way. Actually, Larry, it's two daughters.
See, I don't have that problem, I don't fell off.
You're gonna be the group, you're gonna be the group bae allowed, huh? Don't have to worry about blowing around with the wind.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Well, that's true.
Half of those will get wild up there. Hey Larry, before I start, do you guys don't have a control of out by Riverside Park, do you? The park not, right beside the river? Down by the river? Riverside Park? That would be city, wouldn't it? Sure. Well, they took, you know, they had a park and a lot of right onto that bridge. Where you go fishing. Well, they decided to make the park not three foot higher. But they left about ten foot space before the park got really huge. So I blotted most of, I mean, uh. That's amazing. They could've put a guard developed or something. Nothing, absolutely nothing. My grandson, I went out one night, it was before dark thing, yeah, I felt this run right off up there. Hi, Jim. Hey, Jim. Hey, Jim, Mr. Rex. Good morning, Gary. I can't wait to read.
Oh, that's all the meat.
Were there any that surface or what? Oh, there's. Yeah, he's a girl. He's a girl.
Well, I don't know, I just heard some.
That's supposed to go off the current line. Jesus. It's one third place. Wow. That's not good.
That would treat you as very bad.
Yeah, I wanted to see if he had a disease, one of those.
I think she's a little.
They're like, it's a crucangelo. Uh, crucangelo, no sir. Oh, sorry. All right, Ben. Crucangelo morning, it was, uh. No forming, maybe, I was like, I don't. The order to the shirt, all, we went to, we're, you know, we let you go.
How was Sarah's party?
Um, made it way better. You walk in, the shirt's going, you need to eat. And you walk, so it's all around, so it's a sort of. Yeah, you would even walk across the road, fix work. Jim, one of you. Some girlfriend. Did you have, did you have a lot? Treatments? Just wrong, so good. Yeah, everyone. Yeah. Airplane, airplane. It seemed like they tried to air force it over there. Airplane flying. As we shoot hot air.
Your ankles are. I'm right here, I'm good, listen, first the back, the push, well, they did that.
If I want, how do you start right here? Hard right? Yeah. We can print them here. Just follow the water.
We've had it. So. Hard track. I just said that's.
Who's that? Well, I'm hoping that. I didn't, I didn't come over here. No, it's starting to be. Starting to be. Good, yeah. I'm sure. Maybe you want to be walking up. Good man. Sometimes you do like that.
I'm gonna sleep whenever that is. You're all about it.
Okay, it's ten o'clock, let's call a meeting, order. First item, if you turn off your cell phones. Next item is the minutes, is your motion.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those there? Motion carries. Mr. Butler.
Is there another set of math secrets?
Oh, yes, there was.
We want to.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Butler.
Do you want to do the tax suspension first?
Yep, we can, we got a tax suspension for BM.
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Andy.
Okay, what I have for you to sign here is ten inter-fund transfers. Basically, this is where you levy money in one fund and transfers to another, example, it'd be general supplemental to general basic. Every day that rounds will over four million. Uh, these are where we have to levy taxes. Get a separate fund, move more, secondary roads is another example, county library where we levy in rural basic. Uh, there are some equipment replacement transfers, debt service transfers. And I'm gonna pass these around, but there's ten, they need to be act on each one individually, because there is a individual resolution. So there is actually ten of them there. Can you go right in order there if you want?
Is your motion on the inter-fund operating presentation?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Moving county library fund. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Moving the secondary roads fund.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The rural fund, the replacement fund.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Moving local option sales tax to the general basic fund. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving option sales tax fund to the rural basic fund.
Move it.
Right.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item. Rural fund to general basic fund.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Conservation revenue fund to the capital improvement fund.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Conservation fund to the debt service fund.
Move it.
Right.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Rural basic fund to secondary road fund. Special bridge project.
Sorry, move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You don't want to move that fund. Thank you.
Okay, the other item on agenda there is approval, setting a date, request to set the date for our first budget amendment. For July thirtieth, ten thirty AM. What this amendment does, it does actually spread out the wages to the various department divisions, which we've already done, through the appropriation resolution. And the only other thing is we deleted two cars in next year's budget, and the sheriff's office, because the cars actually came this year, we have to pay them all this year. Normally, they get six cars each year. So we get eight this year, and six, four next year.
The booth public hearing, we set July thirtieth, twenty, uh. Twelve at ten thirty. Second.
Discussion. Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, I'm saying. Still living in the past.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. The treasurer's doing a report.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
You get pretty big names to hold that much money.
You'd like to try it once, though, right?
Yeah.
And the sheriff's report. Energy gain funds. Which is zero. Is there a motion?
Right.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Oh, we have the sheriff's report. On combination funds for thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars. Is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we've got the appointment for the western Iowa. Tourism region. And a bill for five hundred dollars. Mark, you've been on that a month later.
Yeah, that's mine. I do it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I believe the five hundred dollars was approved in the budget.
Was it, was there a bill submitted?
I haven't seen the bill, but it is the budget on the cost of sales tax. I haven't seen the bill, but it is the budget on the sales tax. So I'm assuming they'll send the bill there.
We've got invoice here.
Yep.
Okay, that's all we need.
What the board has before us this morning is consideration and approval of three various contracts. The first one is for the mental health. Mental health court program.
They move on that contract to the mental health for the, uh, uh, the health for.
Discussion?
There may be a reduction coming in the amount of this grant. Um, I'll get back to the board on that if, if that occurs.
That's not, that's just an issue of getting numbers right, that's all. I mean, it doesn't affect the program unless you're.
No, no.
And just as a footnote to this, excuse me, Jim Rixton from the mental health center. We would have the only mental health court left in Iowa. The Black Hawk County Court was closed as of about a week ago.
Was that funding?
That was funded, yeah. Would, that was funded through the county, the mental health court. And I checked with my colleague up there at the Black Hawk, uh, mental health center, he says, yes, we lost the program. So I want to thank you all, and thank Patty for keeping this person.
This is not core service, is that?
Right.
And the funding issues associated with everything going on.
Friendship House.
If you need.
Move on, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move on the Friendship House. Second.
Discussion?
Thank you.
We're happy.
It's partial funding, by the way.
We understand.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Subway mental health of Rupert County for mental health services.
Move on. Second.
Discussion?
We're more than happy with the contract, though, we recommend approval to our board president. Thank both Patty and staff and the board for the support you've given us. We all know next year is going to be entirely due discussion. So we'll make this year work and hope for the best for next year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Dan?
Good morning.
Good morning. Are you ready or not?
Sometimes it seems like it, doesn't it? No. Mark had, uh, he went down to Ames to a reporting meeting this morning on asset management. And he felt that was very important, and I think it is too. He'll probably give you a report on it next week when he gets back. Three bid openings today, and the first one's a three-quarter ton pickup. It appears we have two bids on the three-quarter ton truck, one from Billion and one from Berry Motor. Okay, the trade-in is a two thousand nine Ford F-150. And Billion is proposing a twenty thirteen GMC twenty-five hundred extended cab. And their purchase price without trade is twenty-eight thousand seven hundred. And they're offering seven thousand dollar trade-in. For a net purchase price of twenty-one thousand seven hundred. Next bid is from Berry Motor and Dan Berry.
Billion, what was that, Ford? GMC?
That is a GMC twenty-five hundred extended cab. Uh, Berry is offering a twenty fourteen Ford F-250 XL, four-by-four SD super cab. Their price is twenty-nine thousand and forty-two dollars. Twenty-nine thousand and forty-two dollars. They're offering a trade of, uh, trade-in of seven thousand six hundred and fifty. For a net purchase price of twenty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-two. Twenty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-two. Mark has asked that, uh, he review these bids, reach one of these vehicles, and come back with the recommendation next week.
I move, I need to refer to the engineers' office of recommendations for next week. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is a sport utility vehicle. Okay, we have, uh, three, three bids on that. And I'm sorry, we're going to have to remove back, uh, I see a bid that I did not see for the three-quarter ton truck. From Kneffler. Okay, they are offering a two thousand thirteen Chevy twenty-five hundred HD Silverado. With the LT1 option package. Uh, purchase price of thirty-four thousand two hundred, thirty-four thousand two hundred. With a trade-in of ten thousand five hundred. It would be a net purchase price of twenty-three thousand seven hundred. Twenty-three thousand seven hundred.
Do I have to end my motion to include this bid?
No, we did the first one as a separate bid.
No, this is, this one you missed, this was.
Yeah, that was hit the first bid, the three-quarter ton.
Oh, was that the first one?
Okay, now we're doing the SUV. We do have three bids. Billion, Berry Motor, and Kneffler. Billion is bidding a twenty fourteen Dodge Journey. A purchase price of twenty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. Twenty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. Less their trade-in allowance of four thousand dollars. A net purchase price of nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. Nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. Next bid is from Berry Motor. Uh, Berry is offering a twenty fourteen Ford Explorer XLT four-by-four. Their purchase price is thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty. They're allowing for trade-in four thousand five hundred dollars. Net purchase price of twenty-six thousand four hundred and twenty. Twenty-six thousand four hundred and twenty. The third bid is from Kneffler. And Kneffler's offering a two thousand thirteen Equinox. It's an all-wheel-drive four-door LS. Purchase price of twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen. Twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen. Less a trade-in of four thousand dollars. With a net purchase price of twenty thousand four hundred and eighteen. Twenty thousand four hundred and eighteen.
And that Journey, is it, is it all-wheel drive or?
It is an all-wheel, it says all-wheel drive, four-door LS.
Journey.
Oh, the Journey.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I didn't hear on that one.
Yes, it is an all-wheel drive.
And move it, these bids be referred to the engineers' office of recommendations? Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the third one is a, there are twenty thirteen or fourteen full-size half-ton extended pickups, there are two of them. And the trade-ins we're doing is a two thousand three and a Ford F-150 and a two thousand six Chevy. We have, uh, three, four bids on this vehicle, on these two vehicles. Berry Motor, Woodhouse, Kneffler Chevrolet, and Billion. Open the Billion bid first. Uh, this is replacing the two thousand six Chevy. They're offering a twenty fourteen Ram five hundred quad cab. For a purchase price of twenty-five thousand six hundred. Twenty-five thousand six hundred. They're offering a trade-in of eight thousand five hundred. For a net purchase price of seventeen thousand one hundred. Seventeen thousand one hundred.
Are they taking both of them?
Um, yes, this would be a combined bid, that's how the quote was sent out, even though they have separate specifications.
You would need two named both to replace the other two?
Yes. And the second bid, replacing the two thousand three F-150. Is a two thousand thirteen Chevrolet fifteen hundred extended cab. With a purchase price of twenty-six thousand seven hundred. Twenty-six thousand seven hundred. A liable trade on this vehicle is three thousand five hundred dollars. Three thousand five hundred dollars. Net purchase price of twenty-three thousand two hundred. The first bid is replacing the two thousand six Chevy. They are offering a twenty fourteen Chevrolet Silverado fifteen hundred, four-wheel-drive extended cab. Their purchase price is thirty thousand eight hundred dollars. Thirty thousand and eight hundred dollars. The liable trade is eleven thousand dollars. Eleven thousand. For a net purchase price of nineteen thousand eight hundred. Next vehicles are placing the two thousand three F-150. At Kneffler, yeah, should be two spots for them. They are offering a twenty fourteen Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred, four-wheel-drive extended cab. Purchase price of thirty thousand eight hundred. Thirty thousand eight hundred dollars with a trade-in of six thousand five hundred dollars. Six thousand five hundred. For a net purchase price of twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars. they're offering, uh, three different vehicles. Well, it says two Dodges, two Chevys, and two Fords, so. Okay, we'll start with the Dodges that they proposed.
This is to replace the two thousand six.
This is to replace both vehicles, two thousand six and the two thousand three. They have six bids, two bids, or three bids for each vehicle. Um, but this is the two thousand three replacement. I'm just trying to figure out which one they're actually bidding, they don't come out and say it. Okay, uh, it is a Ram fifteen hundred quad cab, four-by-four. This is for the two thousand three. Thirty-one thousand nine Thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. Thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four with a trade-in of five thousand dollars. For a net price of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. Twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. I think we'll just stay with the two thousand three, I'll give you that price. From the Chevy. And the Chevy is a Silverado fifteen hundred, foil-drive extended cab. And that's thirty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one. Twenty thirteen. Thirty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one, trade-in of five thousand dollars. For a net purchase price of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one. The Ford bid from them is a twenty thirteen Ford F-150 X L T super cab. Twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight. Twenty-nine nine fifty-eight. With a trade-in of five thousand dollars. Net purchase price of twenty-four thousand nine fifty-eight. Okay, so we'll go back now, their, their bid on a two thousand six Chevy. They're offering a Silverado fifteen hundred foil-drive extended cab. That is a twenty thirteen. The purchase price is thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars, less a trade-in of ten thousand. For a net purchase price of twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-one. Twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-one. The Dodge, they're offering a, uh... Two thousand thirteen Ram fifteen hundred S L T quad cab, four-by-four. Thirty-two thousand seven thirty-two. Thirty-two thousand seven thirty-two with a trade-in of ten thousand. Net purchase price of twenty-two thousand seven thirty-two. Twenty-two thousand seven thirty-two. Okay, the last one, the Ford. They're doing a twenty thirteen Ford F-150 four-by-four super cab. Bid price is thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. Thirty-three thousand eight ninety-five with a trade-in of ten thousand dollars. Net purchase price is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. Twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. So it looks like Mark has some comparing and allowances to do on some of these bids. Oh, you know what, we got a Berry bid here too, yep. Thought I was done. Should've took your knife opener, Karen, it would've helped a lot. Huh? Yeah, well... Well, it, it looks to me like they combined the bid on one sheet. So we'll have to, we'll have to talk to them about that. It is on the, it is on the sheet for the two thousand three F-150, but I don't believe the price is correct. Looking at this, looks like it could be two vehicles, but I'm gonna read the bid, it's on the quote for the two thousand three. Fifty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight. With a net trade of two thousand five hundred. Net purchase price fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight. That's it, gentlemen. Just wanted to give you an update real quickly on Luton's laptop or paving that we're doing, you're probably gonna get some calls on that. Taken quite a few calls and we're working with the contractor to try to alleviate a lot of the dust problems down there. So I don't know, have you got a lot of calls or not really? Well, I'll be surprised if you do, we have changed a little bit of what they're doing, they moved the trucks back on the project and not taking the gravel as much as possible. Also, they brought in a water truck to water in front of the, uh... Yeah, but, you know, I did drive down there yesterday and look at it and, um, pretty much there's a quarter inch of dust on just about everything when you drive along down there, which is... Everybody has had those underalls, so, but, thank you.
Good morning. I'll be short and sweet. Uh, just have a request to extend the, uh, performance period of our two thousand eleven information sharing grant. Well, there you go. Okay. Just need two signatures and then I'll send that to the state for their signatures and get a copy back to you. Thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Sheriff.
Good morning. Well, I'm not short. Probably not sweet either, but we'll try to move on. Talking about the reserves and trying to, uh, I sent a letter to the board members about, uh, getting our reserve numbers up. Uh, we have a couple of concerns and one of them is, uh, the number of reserves that we're down to and how we can, uh, bring that number up to a sustainable, uh, level to help us in areas of need. Recent, uh, ruling, uh, with the human resources and, and, uh, Mike Stabile from Wage and Hour. He has a differing opinion than the attorney who represents the county. Several years ago had an opinion that the correctional officers could work, uh, as reserves. And J D got an opinion from Mr. Stabile. He doesn't feel that's necessary, Mr. Stabile is wage an hour, so I kinda, you know, I, I don't know where to go with that one. Josh reviewed it and his opinion was kinda, uh, in agreement with Mr. Stabile since he is a fair labor standard federal wage an hour. That, uh, maybe to avoid a conflict or eventually they're the ones that decide, uh, so... That would take some of our correctional officers that we've used in the past out of the equation unless we can, uh, uh, we're gonna have a meeting with J D and, uh, uh, Pat, the auditor, and Mr. Stabile in the future, and one of the board members to see where we're at and to try to decide if they, uh, uh, if we can, uh, get some different light shed on them, but, uh, so that would take our reserves down to, I believe, five, great, is that? Six. And, uh, we have, uh, a number of people, uh, willing and ready to go. And we'd like to see a number of thirty reserves. Ideally, that would, that would be, uh, a very good number for us to use out in the county for different events that we have coming up. Uh, or in the, in the future always. So, um, with the fair, we just got through a Saturday in the park, we, we didn't have very many reserves to help because we were, I think we had three that day and two in Bronson on their big celebration. We did have a few in Anthem, but, uh, when you have such a small number and remembering that they're volunteers, they have commitments with their job and their family. So, the, the larger the number does help us with getting more people to come out and, uh, volunteer and that's, uh, that's the direction that we're looking and, uh, the board, from the way I read the, uh, the law is, is that you will decide the number of reserves that the sheriff should have in his reserve unit. So, that's the number that we'd like to, uh, work with. There may be issues about how we can go about, um, paying for some of their, uh, physical. In past practice was they went and got a physical through the, uh, local chiropractor and got some, uh, things done locally, I believe, from, uh, eye and hear, hearing test at the health center. So it helped keep the cost down. J D was, I believe, tasked by Mr. Clausen to, uh, check on, uh, seeing if they could have it here, the problem is the cost is so expensive, it's four hundred seventy-seven dollars and... So we would ask if that's the case, I do have some money in the reserve fund, but, uh, if the board would consider, uh, paying for some of that or we just take it from there, we, there's different, uh, ways that sheriff's offices, police departments, uh, raise money. They have, uh, golf fundraisers, they have, uh, just different events to try to raise dollars to help, um, fund the reserve program. So just looking for, um, some guidance and, uh, some direction so we can get this rolling because we have, uh, a number of people waiting and, and ready to go. Right, if, uh... Not, not one-on-one, but if they, uh, for example, Saturday in the park where we had some, they had to have a deputy there to supervise them, right?
So they're on-site?
Right. Right, right, or nearby, I think if we used them for, uh, an area of, if they were on patrol, that, as long as there was a supervisor with them or in the vicinity of them, that, that's a, another, another way to do it. Often that, um, in past, they ridden along with another deputy. And, uh, other places though allow, a lot of counties allow them to drive that vehicle on their own, they just don't have them do traffic enforcement, but they'll do... For example, if a deputy made an arrest for, say, drunk driving, they would show up and help with the tow process and, and all the things that would keep us from being tied up, so... Uh, they can, they can be used in that area also.
Sheriff, do you have specific, um, I guess duties that they will be performing, I mean, is that outlined or is it just, uh?
It, it's...
Week by week or is it out, like, for me, it, it would be easier to make a decision if I knew exactly what their duties would be. And in the vicinity, does that mean, you know, I think there's a lot of gray areas, so...
Right, um, sure, right. Well, if you utilize them with your patrol division, you'd have a supervisor working on patrol and if you had, say, for example, um, a reserve that was working in the town of Bronson or Lawton, as long as there was a supervisor, um, working that shift with them, then, then you're okay.
Is that written down, I mean, have you established a policy within your department that outlines if you lease up a reserve?
Yes, we have reserves, have policy and how, how we'll handle the things, yes. And we have, uh, you know, the main part of the reserves is often they are used for all the functions of the summer activities that come up. Um, the county fair, I, we went through Saturday in the park, uh, they've, different parades, Rivercade, traffic control has often been the pass. But sheriffs, uh, throughout the ninety-nine counties and different police departments, they recognize that they are a valuable resource in a time where everybody's strapped for money. And, uh, so you can utilize them in, in a, uh, variety of different areas. Because they're, they are certified reserves, the only difference is, is that they are not able to enforce the drunk-driving law of implied consent. That's the only difference. Right, well, in this, in the mere fact that when they're not working, they have no powers, whereas a deputy, when he's not working, he can still make an arrest and do that. But while they're working under the authority of the sheriff or the chief of police, they have the police powers.
Well, you know, we just signed, I guess I'm asking, because we just signed numerous contracts for a group of small towns.
Right. That, you know, and that's, that is one of the ways that we could utilize them, uh, that, that's a strong possibility. I think it'd be a, a really good way to increase our, uh, coverage in the county. They could patrol in those smaller towns, if the towns wanted to add additional hours, they, we could utilize them for that also without coming and saying, you know, we could sure use more deputies, I think you can use these for this and deputies can still remain doing other activities.
Because initially you thought you probably had enough manpower to, to cover all those or you provided...
We, we, no, we, we still do, um, I think just to do, provide a better, uh, quality service and more time. And, you know, we, we will be able to do a lot more once our six, uh, recruits are out of the academy. Because we are planning on putting those people out on patrol, we've added, uh, since I took office, more, we put more people out on patrol to help. You know, so I think the smaller towns are starting to see that there's more deputies. And then also, when we, uh, got out of the Clima Hill substation and said, let's be more visible and more accessible, that you're starting to see that more. But, um, yeah, it would be nice, uh, the, the whole reason behind that number is, um, to, to recognize, not a large number, but to recognize that they're volunteers. And so to get someone to help four or five hours a week, eh, when a person works, you know, nine to five, has family events, um, four or five hours out of week is a pretty good amount to volunteer. And, uh, if you only have four or five guys doing it, you're gonna be hard-pressed to get, uh, those additional hours from people, because they're busy with their own lives.
How do we ensure them? Does that come under our liability insurance? I mean, that would be, you know, I guess the cost.
Yeah. It's, uh, I believe, and J D would have all those numbers, but, uh, we pay him a dollar and then, uh, the, uh...
As, as the liability works is, is that they get paid a dollar. And at this point in the past, it's only been ever paid a dollar. And the issue of the general liability is it would be out there and there would be a negative issue to any required losses that would fall under the county's general liability. The area where there's a, a liability is under the workman's compensation because the workman's compensation... Because the workhorse compensation reads differently. And if somebody gets injured while they're performing this volunteer service, their workhorse compensation rate for it's just a dollar level that they would be paid at is determined off what their private job is. So if you've got somebody making a hundred thousand dollars as an example, and they're one of your reserve officers, that work comp rate would be at a hundred thousand, then rather, than where we rather put you as a deputy at a different price. That's what our work comp carrier says is that that's your basic factor. Because if you have too many of those, it'll make the mod factor go up and increase the cost of your work comp.
I have a neighbor, she's sort of bashful, was in the audience this morning, and she's bent my ear. Her husband has volunteered a couple nights a week, weekends for reading.
Right.
So it's a pretty big commitment.
It is.
For nothing?
For, for nothing.
They're a little confused over the four seventy-seven and why they should pay it. Because I agree with them, we should pick that up.
I, I agree wholeheartedly and I, I'd really like to see it because they pay, we take a number of our uniforms that we have, if somebody outgrew them or now they're, lost some weight, and we have a supply and we try to get those guys to get them and get them fitted and hemmed and all that. So we piecemeal things together because otherwise I have to go out and buy all that equipment on top of the four seventy-seven and then just say, would you volunteer? And that's, that's quite a, quite a asking for people. And I would just say this, in the history of nineteen eighty-one, and Larry, you were probably pretty close to being around with Russ White Jr., was sheriff, he started the reserve program, then called the sheriff's posse. And it grew up to about a number of forty-six members. It has gone down in number because of people's commitment and time and that spirit of volunteerism is still alive and healthy and's kind of regenerated. But for a while, we had a lull. But the county in past practice always did all they could to help build this reserve program because it's, it's a, it's a great program. And it is not, it is with a little bit of cost, but I believe it's, it's a cost that benefits the county as a whole.
Do you see this as having not to add deputies then? I mean, is that your thought, whether in one run you would more come and request a non-reserved deputy?
Right, that's a fine line because you can't supplant, but you can supplement, right?
And I think it is a fine line.
Right.
Because I, even in my other life-
Right.
-would kind of ran it in education-
Sure.
-to hire people paraprofessionals that would help us.
Right.
But always running the risk of, you know, hiring too many people with not the same qualifications or the same expertise-
Right.
-and as a, as the one with a background. You know, it was nice to have a help, but it, I, we never advocated-
Right.
-we must not have positions to hire, you know, the-
Right. Well, I, I think the uniqueness of the fact that every sheriff's office and a lot of police departments have them, but they recognize that when it comes time for sworn personnel, that'll always be, you need to have sworn personnel. What, what's happened in the past with our reserves is some of them have become correctional officers and then become deputies. It's somewhat of a stepping stone. And that's what I like. And the numbers that I've seen recently are some younger guys, we wanted some, and, and a nice mix, some younger and some older. Because you have some more maturity. And, you know, we just, we've had great success and the program is really starting to ramp back up and people are excited. But, you know, with the fact that CF Industries is gonna be coming, there's gonna be a lot of concern with traffic control down there. CF has told us on a number of occasions, they're concerned about the thousands and thousands of trucks coming in and out daily and it takes more than just barricades and you, you have to have adequate coverage. It'd be like going to, I'm, I'm not gonna say Lincoln, but like going to Hawkeye football game and everybody trying to leave at once. You, you can't just hope everybody gets out there. You need to have law enforcement there, you need to have, they have police there, troopers there, they have reserves there helping with that. So, those are, those are some of the usage of our reserve program.
I have two questions. JD, have we ever paid a liability lawsuit with reserves, ever?
Not today.
Second question, maybe Mr. Butler. Physicals, we always paid for the physicals through the reserve deputies?
No, not through county funds. It could possibly be through the reserve fund, which isn't county money.
Okay. Do you know, Sheriff, where do the physicals pay for?
I believe, what do you know, Major Stone?
The, the physicals were paid for by the individual. They weren't the four hundred, they just spent the ILEA qualification to be a reserve and then they were refunded it after they completed the year of service. They were refunded their money back. Because you didn't want to get into paying for physicals and equipment and everything and then have somebody go, wow, this is a lot more than I anticipated. So if they completed a year of service, they refunded them their physicals.
And how much difference is it between those two physicals, do you know?
About three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
And ILEA recognizes where they were getting physicals. It's just like going to the, for high school physicals, they go to a chiropractor and the chiropractor's recognized medical doctor and so those are recognized by ILEA. And it substantially saves those people some dollars.
So JD, could we go through those? Could we use those other people instead?
We made the change this year when we got our meeting, we talked to Dave and there, if they were gonna be doing and having some of the same powers, needed the same physical fitness as a regular sworn, we would try to get them to be at an equal stature so that both sides and both people working knew that they were physically fit. They, they've done it that way in the past. I'd have to check with our commentary or give you a true answer in the past. But you have to realize in the past, nothing negative against the past administration. Dave's administration has brought this more forward than it's ever been before. I mean, in the past, we didn't even know the numbers, we didn't know how many people there were, what they were doing, different types of things that were being done. It was a closed door. And I think they will agree with me on that. It would just get very hush-hush and quiet, we never knew about it.
Right, that's the question of what are the duties?
Right. Well, I, I get it.
If there's a policy or-
I think the simplest way is, we do have a reserve policy. It spells out exactly what they need. Reserves don't run radar, they don't run traffic. They are simply there to support the deputies that are working, whatever event that is. If it's Saturday in the park, or the county fair, or patrol function, they work in a support capacity. That's how you, your deputies on the road, your sworn officers are still calling the shots responding to the calls. These guys would do like if you had the O W I arrest, they would handle the tow for you. The deputy would do the affidavit in his car, hand them the person that's arrested, they would transport him to jail for him. So the deputy can get back out on the road. We're not sending the guy downtown now for an hour and a half to deal with a, a person that's been arrested doing the booking and that type of stuff. We keep our sworn officers on the road, our reserve deputies can, because now they have the ability to do the affidavit in the car, send it, the reserve would pick them up. They would handle the tow for them so they could handle the criminal offense, that type of stuff is what, so it's, it's a support role is what reserves do.
So they volunteer nine hours a month?
We mandate that they volunteer nine hours a month because you could take a reserve certificate and you could go correctional, Ampton, Mowville, Sloan, Sergeant Bluff, all hires reserves, Hinton, Merrill, a lot of these towns. They can, once you're a state certified reserve, you're, you're just like a deputy. I could go work for anybody, any law enforcement agency in the state, they can do the same and they would be able to make money off of that certificate that we give them. Therefore, we mandate that they give us nine hours for the training and the certificate that we're, everybody does that, that almost everybody does that. Once they exceed the nine hours, a lot of sheriff's offices go into a part-time pay thing for them. But with the numbers that we have, we don't really ever anticipate that, you know, if we have thirty, I can't imagine the time where we're gonna have one working more than nine hours a month.
And I would say this, that we have at the county parks, different police agencies that are working those county parks. And we'd be better served if we used our reserve because really you probably wouldn't have to pay them. So, in other words, instead of paying the Sergeant Bluff police officer extra duty to work at the parks, we could have a reserve there and he could work that part because they work, I believe, from eleven till three in the morning. And that would be part of his nine hours of the month. And that, that in turn would save the county quite a bit of money. Because if you think about-
That's a different issue, is another constitution and their budgeting and, I mean-
I, I don't know.
The feedback I've gotten from a number of people is you're talking about paying fifteen to twenty-five hours an hour?
The most would be fifteen if they worked above and beyond the nine hours.
How would you control that?
We, they work under a schedule, we just apply anybody else.
Do you have money? They're asking the ad staff?
That money would come if we decided to do, and this is down the road, but if we ever got to that point, where we use them in the smaller towns, where you're collecting the thirty-five dollars an hour. If a town decided to contract and say they wanted to contract twenty hours a month, then we would have a reserve deputy go there, we would pay them the fifteen if they've over the nine hours. And then that money would go into the reserve fund, so you'd never tap into any funds from the county because it would be self-sustaining. And that would only be-
Then they cease to become volunteers, they're paid employees.
No, they're, they're still, they're still-
You're gonna be kind of subcontractor in a, in a contract with the county.
No, they're still a volunteer under Iowa code, they're still considered a volunteer. You just chose to pay them a small fee for doing their job.
And, and you-
And the other volunteer-
I'm just saying, it doesn't sound right to me if you're a volunteer, you're a-
I mean, that's what the county says.
Yeah, and that's how the other counties all do it.
I'm not sure. See, there's a lot of unanswered questions here for me.
Sure.
And one of them is that we are gonna be increasing our ability substantially with a substantial more people. Our work comp is gonna go up. Things have changed since nineteen eighty-one as far as responsibility and what happens in the community. And I'm just, there's just a lot of unanswered questions here that I, I need to have answered.
Well, how long-
Particularly if you're gonna, a volunteer's a volunteer, I don't, and, and volunteers are good, they really are, we need them. But your, your status has changed when you become a paid employee.
You're not asking for a paid employee yet.
Not yet, but do you see what happens?
And that's why, and, and-
There is that issue.
Right. And that, and as you see me here, I bring this to you. Just as if I went to that next step, I'd bring that to you before I did it. That's courtesy. That's professionalism. You've never seen me hide anything behind a closed-
Well, I'm not trying to hide anything either. That's why I'm bringing this issue up and concern that I have.
Well, and, and, you know, every time we bring something up, it just, it gets tabled till, till we just get nowhere. And I mean, that is, that is my history of dealing with you, is that it just keeps-
Well, you can't.
No, no, that's, I'm entitled to my opinion.
You are, but you've said so many things in the past that are so outrageous, it bears on ridiculous.
And how would that be, Larry? What is ridiculous? Let's just talk about what's ridiculous.
Two-two-one. Where'd you come up with that?
Well, it's state law.
No, no, where did you come up that we had those?
Two-two-one?
Yeah.
Well, often you've called me over and it's been you and George and I've sat in there, or I've had different-
Supervisors, David.
Right. You've, you've talked to me about different things. Well, I don't see what that issue is. See, here it is, it all comes out that you harbor bad feelings there.
I don't harbor any bad feelings, but the thing is, Dave, you've gotta think things through.
And I do, Larry. I'm kinda tired of that story right there. I'm gonna tell you, because we have thought things through, we've thought about how it saved dollars for this county and I-
Did you have any supervisors?
Because I'm not, I, this is the place to do it. I've told you over and over, this is the place. You're the audience. We have, we can, we can work this out till one o'clock.
You're working out till ten o'clock tonight?
Exactly. And this is where you bring it up. I've sent you letters, you got it in your pocket. I've kept you up to date and I've informed you. You wonder why sometimes other people just did it the other way? I'm not doing it that way. Other administration went and you didn't know what was going on. So I, I'm the guy penalized because I'm sitting here coming forth with ways to save money, ways to utilize manpower, and yet I'm the guy who's just coming up with these crazy wild ideas. I take offense to that.
You should. I've taken offense to a lot of things you said.
Well, that's fine. Because you know what? I'm glad not to be on the same page when you act like that.
Well, another concern that I have, I heard that the volunteers would be carrying weapons.
Well, they always have.
And I can't recall in my years authorizing reservists to carry weapons. And again, that increases our liability, Dave, from my, from my standpoint. If they're gonna be, if they're going to be along with certified deputies as we have and they are supervised by these individuals, but then you're gonna use them in small communities to enforce, you know, town law, that again brings about a liability issue that's gonna come back to the sport or something that definitely happens out there. If they pull their gun and they shoot somebody or, or someone is, is hurt, I'm very, very concerned about that because then we have the responsibility of, of defending that individual or individuals in, in a court, which is gonna cost county dollars.
But we've had reserves for, well, thirty-plus years and they've always carried a weapon.
I did not know that they carried weapons that entire time.
Yeah.
That increases our liability because they have not, they may have been, been trained by, by our deputies here, but they're, they have no certification from the state.
Yes, they do. Yeah, they do.
Who do they, who do they, who do they, who do they sort of train?
Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, they go through a module, they have to be supervised by the deputy doing it. And the state of Iowa, the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy Committee accepts that and allows that to happen.
And every, that's a reason-
Right.
From, 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 from us.
From us.
So you're saying, let me stop right there. Correctional officers, we are allowed to carry, we go through the same training. So what you're saying is as a reservist, there's just as much liability, but what about us correctional officers that carry a weapon? So you're saying we shouldn't carry them either?
Well, we're trained just by the idea of you-
You are, you are employed.
You are employed, you-
So are they.
So-
So are they. We pay them a dollar.
So are they, you pay them a dollar. That's what I, yeah.
That's symbolistic though, David. I mean, that's-
But I disagree with you guys on that.
Well, I-
Well, first blush, I think thirty is too many, I guess, for me. I mean, just to let you know, I think probably there's a place, they have a good function going from six to thirty. I, I just, I'm not sure how the deputies are really-
The deputies are-
-attending for this because to me it's taking away their job in the long run or ever adding a, a fully certified deputy. I mean, I'd be looking down the road and be-
Hey, the deputies are hired and working with two people on patrol. They'll make anybody they can get out there to help them out. They're happy to have the reserves come out and work.
Hang yourself in a corner and hire some more deputies then. If you don't want to use reserves then-
Hire some more. Every deputy is short on reserve over here.
Well, then you're saying that you're understaffed, basically is what you're saying.
Is that what you're saying? I don't know.
Well, we're-
We are understaffed.
We are, we are understaffed in the jail and we are understaffed in the patrol division.
Well, I guess I can't accept that either because I can't, I don't remember us within the next, within the last five, six years reducing your staff, particularly when we have authority from the state when we remodel the upstairs over there so that we could have two hundred some odd prisoners in our, in our facility and we reduce that number down to our average of about a hundred and eighty some a month. And we didn't reduce your staff, David.
Right, but you-
But you're also, you're also, I'll stop right there, I'm sorry. I work both jobs, I'm sorry I have to bring this up, but I am tired of working with six people with a hundred eighty-seven inmates. You guys don't understand the pressure and everything else and these liability, these lawsuits that keep coming. They're coming from not having enough staff. And it's not his fault, it's not your fault. They're coming from not having enough staff and it's not his fault, it's not your fault, but we need to come to a minimum and, and we're not getting there. And you're getting a lot of people stressed out. You get a lot of people that don't pay attention and that's when lawsuits happen.
We never, we never reduced your staff.
You haven't, but the people have grown in the facility. When you're averaging a hundred eighty-seven to two hundred
We were averaging, we were averaging over two hundred and some odd clients a day.
But you can also look at code. Try and look at some code.
And the number has gone down.
George, just, just to shed, to shed a little light, one thing that you need to think about is the longevity of people that are there. So when we give them five weeks vacation and we give them two personal days and they have sick time or they're in the military, when, when they're gone, we have to backfill. We can't say like a grocery store, that aisle's closed. We have to make sure we have adequate. And, you know, I'm not trying to build a kingdom. I'm trying to save the county dollars. And when we work with six people in the jail and basically two that are locked up in master control or secondary, that's four people for a hundred and eighty-seven or a hundred and ninety. I, I feel strongly that that's just not, there's safety in numbers and you know, it's pay me now or pay me later. And I sat here the first few months in office and watched us pay money.
Well, you know, I, I think you should have the right numbers and I do believe in safety and keeping, you know, employees safe out here. I really do believe that. But as I said, we have not reduced your staff over those, over those
And we're working on that to see.
And we tried to break down the population of jail by, by the different programs.
Right. And I think we have. I, and I do and I applaud, it was a collaborative effort on everybody's part to make sure and we're, we're continuing to do that. On Fridays, we meet together and with the clerks and try to figure out with the judges, how we can get people out. But quite frankly, over the years, some of our criminals have become more violent and as a society, we, we don't want them.
You're right about that. Like I said, the environment has really changed because society has become a lot more unstructured, if you will, to be nice.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I'm concerned about, again, the liability. I know that you're trying to save us money, but I'm also trying to save us money
Right, I agree.
down the road in, in the future because there are things that's going to happen in this community that we have no control of. People enter these kinds of programs with great intentions, but things happen and there are suits against this county as a whole. And the taxpayer has to pick up the bill.
Right. But I, I, just like I said, with the numbers of the reserves, I think it's a beneficial program and it's up to you to decide the numbers. I'll, I'll live with what numbers you think are worth going, but thi- this group of people who are waiting and willing to start to help would really like an answer. Now, I'm not saying you have to do it overnight, but I really think with due respect, I believe I sent this letter a few weeks back, at least maybe close to a month, that we need to move forward because there's modules that they can take and we're delaying it with the academy and we'd, we'd surely like to take advantage of it. And, and feel free check with sheriffs, Sioux County, Plymouth County, surrounding counties or board members and ask them the success of the sheriff's reserve program and the strength and the, and how it provides for the counties because this is not unique.
I don't know where this came from, but it was on the desk this morning. Scott County, or no, Johnson County has twenty-five reservists. Potawatomi County has fifty, fifty-two.
Right.
And Scott County has twenty-two, they train.
Right.
So they're out there.
They are and they, I'm, I'm just
Which two counties don't have any? You know, there's two that
I have a lack of.
Yeah, they don't, there's two counties that don't have any.
Two out of ninety-nine. I'm in pretty good numbers there, but, so
I guess I'd like to see us do something with this, these physical things to get it moved along. I know there's a lot of people that are just kind of sitting and waiting, going.
How many are sitting?
I think thirty.
Thirty-one, thirty-one.
Are sitting and waiting already?
Right.
I would say we, I'd make a motion that we take money from Riverboat to cover the thirty-one physicals.
Can't do that.
Oh, okay. I try.
Before you do thirty-one, you really need to figure out the number of reserves. Why wouldn't you pay for thirty-one? The board approves ten. You need to set throughout what's the number of reserves? You got six right now? If you only drew ten, why wouldn't you do thirty-one physicals? You have that county's going to pay for it. You need, you need to determine the number of reserves you're going to have. That's where everybody's going to work together on that. Then you can say, are we going to pay for them now? Because you wouldn't do thirty-one physicals and hire none. Why would you pay for them and not hire? For having a reserve, you need to set the number. Right now you have six. Do you want sixteen? Do you want twenty-six? Do you want fifty? Why wouldn't you pay for thirty-one physicals when you only know the number yet? The number's key.
Well, it's like, I, I agree and I also think I need to know what our equipment's comp expense is going to be when, when we do decide a number. Because that's, because the insurance company's going to look at that. I mean, and, and say that your exposure exists, is it going to increase our insurance by another hundred thousand? I don't know that.
What
George, I think you've got to look at two factors. You've got to look at the liability, if there is a lawsuit and the liability and the work comp cost increase. And you have to weigh those two because there are both possibilities, both of them.
Well, Jim, I know that
Which one costs the most?
And that's, and that's what I'm weighing. And we've got a history here of, of, of suits.
Yeah, I know. I'm a taxpayer. I pay for it.
That's right.
That's right.
I'm trying to look after you, Jim.
I got, I got one thing. JD, um, I was going to ask you a question. I lost my train of thought. We're in there, I'm doing. We'll need to know if we can go with the cheaper physicals too. If we could, please.
That might be a more policy though, Dave. That might be something that we would have to decide if we want them, if, if we, if the reserves are going to act like and perform like deputies under the supervision of the, I understand, but if they're basically going to have the same power
Right.
then I'm like, I want our citizens to be safe. I want the same standards. I, I do.
Right, and that's
JD and you agreed on that.
Right, that's what JD and I, we, and Larry, we all
We want high standards. You just
Right. And we should have high standards and that's what we want. And there's, and there is no variance. I mean, the, I, I want you to understand that these people go through an interview, a process. We, we just don't, you have to apply and we decide if you're of that, what we think is that caliber. We run a, it's probably no different than being hired as a correctional officer or a deputy. And like I said, often we've hired them as reservists, become correctional officers or deputies. So we have a really good group and it, it is really no different than your small towns using a volunteer fire division, you know, Dave. They have
My husband just joined this reserve program. Um, my husband's been on the fire department for Sergeant Bluff for fourteen years. He's
What is your name?
I'm Elisa Halliwell. My husband's Josh Halliwell. Um, he's been on the fire department for fourteen years. He decided to join this program not only as being an Iraqi, you know, war veteran, just to help. So you're not just putting a gun in somebody's hand that doesn't know what they're doing. There's, I would say there's four of them that have been in the military. So you're not just going to hand somebody a gun that doesn't know what they're doing, okay? For one. Okay, for two, there's insurance out there, just like when they're on duty for the fire department. If he slips, he falls, he gets hurt with the fire department, they cover it, okay? It's not like he's on the insurance all the time. He is giving up his time for this program to help these guys. You guys don't realize, were you at Saturday in the park when these boys were sweaty, a mess, all those people? Were you out there helping them? No, these guys that are volunteers, they're willing to help them and you guys are just shutting them down. Four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, that's a lot of money to come out of my pocket for a volunteer service. If you didn't have volunteer in Sergeant Bluff, stuff would be high for the fire department. Our taxes are low because we have volunteers on that fire department. And if it wasn't for the volunteers, we wouldn't have anything. What I'm seeing though of this physical, of you guys sitting here arguing, you guys don't see our point. I see your point. You have really, don't have a point. It's volunteers. And if you guys are going to sit there and shut us down because we want to help, then you guys aren't going to get anybody out there. It's us, the citizens, that see it. I was at that Saturday in the park. I saw these boys in uniform. I see them every Friday night at the ball fields helping people, doing things, controlling people, controlling the outrageous drunks, you know? You guys don't see that. And my husband's willing to do it and then you guys want him to spend four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and do this and do that. It's your choice. You're just going to push him away because I know us as a family, we can't afford it. And that's what you're going to do. You ain't going to get anybody better than him or some of those guys in this program because they've been through Iraq for eighteen months. They've done all their volunteer service thirteen years on a fire department. So if you want to push him away, that's fine. That's your guys' loss. But he was a good candidate for this program.
I told you she was special.
Larry, we'll go back and see what we can do on the physicals because all, we've always worked with Mercy Occupation because they've been our provider. I'm not saying we can't try looks.
Well, that's, I thought you'd done that already.
No, not because we just pushed hard on Mercy because they had handled all our work comp, our first report for injury. We don't do that with looks. We have to stay with our one provider who we have and I will be at Mercy this afternoon, land some letters too, as to what needs to be done. And they talk so we can say that they're a sponsor of the Woodbury County Reserve Program. And I don't, Woodbury County would be hesitant to give them some notoriety with it too. So let's, let's plan a two-way street here.
Uh, Dave, to get this moving, to get this over with, I think we need a little better plan. We need a plan. We need to know the numbers you're gearing for. There's been talk about paying the reserves. You want to know where that's going.
Okay.
You do not have access to the money that is paid by the cities. That's not the sheriff's department money. That's the general basic fund money. Vehicles. Where are we going to get the vehicles for these people to drive?
That's probably part of the lack of communication in the past. We have them. The reserves always bought their own vehicles when they had their own account. So we have those vehicles, some that we get rid of.
I know we had some
That are sitting out there in the, in the garage that they built. And so they keep them stored and they might have oh, ninety-five hundred thousand, but they're very well maintained and we work with different vendors to try to help the costs and things such as that. So the vehicles are there.
They actually, the reserves paid for their own building at Brerica. They have their own garage completely paid for out of the reserve fund. And that's where they keep their vehicles.
Do they have a training room out there to have training?
Yep. I wanted, I wanted to address the instructors through Mr. Boykin. And if a reserve instructor, ILEA has instructors and we have a lot of deputies that are instructors and they teach them like with and at ILEA. To be a reserve instructor, you not only have to have that certificate, you have to go back to ILEA and obtain another certificate above and beyond a normal instructor. A normal instructor can't teach a reserve. You have to be trained to be a reserve instructor on top of your expertise that you're teaching.